I have similar things that... Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the April 21st, 2015 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will notice that all council members are present with the... are present with the exception of Mr. Wolf, who is excused. First, I'd like to welcome, we have three students from Post Falls High School Student Council, and so they're here to observe, so hopefully we'll all behave and conduct business like we should, but welcome, glad you could join us. With that, we have ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations. First item up is the introduction of the new presidents for Jobs Plus. Ginny Abricosa, did I pronounce right? Gilliam. Ginny, welcome.
Well, thank you for the invitation to let you guys know what Jobs Plus's vision is for the future. Okay? So, what we're doing is, we're doing a more three-pronged approach. We are in the job creation. In the previous years, the focus has been on attracting businesses into the area. We will continue to do that, of course, but we also want to make sure we're paying attention to the existing companies that are here, in terms of retaining them in our area and helping them expand. So, we'll partner with existing organizations in the community, whether it's SBDC, the Chamber, the Panhandle Area Council, sorry, I got a little lost in the acronym over there, but we'll work with all of our partners in the community as far as helping expand and retain businesses in the area. And then we also want to focus on creating that entrepreneurial culture, so that we can have more startups. On the charts that I will show you guys on Thursday during our annual luncheon, you'll see the growth of startup businesses in the area is actually very good. So, we want to make sure we continue to also provide that resource, people. So, again, we'll partner with all of the existing businesses, whether it's Innovation Collective, really pay attention to all the things that are envisioned 2030, to see where we're going, and then, you know, move in that direction. But those three focus on business retention and expansion, business attraction, as well as new business. And one of the... the second thing we want to do as Jobs Plus is really strengthen all the partnerships between all... between Jobs Plus and all the different organizations and the communities that we serve. So, whether it's Post Falls, Rathram, Coeur d'Alene, Hayden, we want to make sure that partnership with the communities is really strengthened. We're working, you know, there was a, for instance, a proposal, you know, communicating with Shelley and Russ all day going, "Well, are we submitting, not submitting? We need to know all the details that, you know, very important to the city, whether they can provide the services that we're going to say on those proposals." So, we need to work very closely with the communities. And then the third part, of course, is just, we want to be very proactive in everything that we're doing, whether it's the business attraction, finding good leads, filling in the gaps in our supply chain, determining where we want to be in the future. If in 10 years we want to be here, then we all better be strategically moving in that direction if we're... that's where we want to go. We also want to analyze some of the infrastructure that we might need. There's a piece of property that Shelley, Russ, and I will probably get together and meet about after, in a couple of weeks, because we know that there's a constant search for, like, giant pieces of, you know, acreage, and then, but they want rail, and then all sorts of different things that go with it. So, we want to make sure that we actually have the resources available for the businesses the next time we get a proposal in our area. In the meantime, in the last five weeks, or six weeks, I have met over 100 people. I think I sent you guys the report. It's been a very good meetings. We've been doing a lot of outreach to all the commercial realtors, and they're starting to really reach out back to us as far as exchanging information. We do have to keep information confidential, but at the same time, amongst partners, we should be able to talk about what the projects are. Otherwise, we could be working on the same project, calling it all different names when it's actually one project that we're working on. And I think the communications that we've been developing the last six weeks is really narrowing that down for all of us, and I'm really excited about all the different things going on. And again, we want to invite you on Thursday, this is the very short version, not that it's going to be that much longer on Thursday, because I really don't want to talk for, like, hours. We'll make it like an hour and a half. Is that cool with everyone? Just kidding. But anyway, it'll be... it'll be a little bit longer than this. Anyhow, any questions?
I'd just like to say welcome, and if you can tell if you haven't already that with Ginny, excuse me, with Ginny, we have a bundle of energy. You will find that City Post Falls will work collaboratively with you, with the other communities. What's good for one is good for the others, so we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, and I'm already seeing that with, you know, City Post Falls working very closely with them.
You mentioned the Innovation Collective, and a good group of people are Technology, Joe, you know, Nick Smoot, and...
Right.
And I had the opportunity two weeks ago to present, to be the interviewees with Mayor Widmire in Coeur d'Alene, and that was... the number of people that showed up was remarkable. They've done a very good job in creating that interest in the startups.
Entrepreneurial, yeah, so it's really... I'm excited about that, too, and we're going to work with them to figure out how we really encourage that even more.
So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Been having a blast the last six weeks, been busy, but it's been fun.
Good, look forward to it. Lots of successes.
Now, I'm going to go ahead and run off, because we have that annual thing we're preparing for on Thursday. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next are announcements, and I have asked Mr. Malloy to step in for me, because I don't believe I could read through them and keep a voice, so, Joe?
All right. Greens Ferry Overpass update, starting tonight, Tuesday, April 21st, eastbound I-90 will be completely closed from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. for replacement of girders over the interstate. Eastbound traffic will be detoured off of the interstate at exit 5, which is Spokane Street, be routed along Celtae Way through Post Falls and back onto I-90 at exit 7, which is Highway 41. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 22nd, westbound I-90 will be completely closed from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. with the same detour along Celtae Way through Post Falls. On Thursday, April 23rd, the intersection of Greens Ferry and Schneid Miller Avenue and the most eastern portion of Schneid Miller Avenue will be completely closed for placement of girders. This closure will be from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Daily updates are available on the city's website and Facebook page, and if you can help to spread the word to everybody, that would be appreciated. Community Business Fair is tomorrow, Wednesday, the 22nd, at the Greyhound Park and Event Center from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The Post Falls Chamber of Commerce will host the annual Community Business Fair. Stop by and visit the city's booth. A spring cleanup day is this Saturday, April 25th, and there are several events happening that day. One is the extra garbage pickup on Saturday. Put items at the street by 6:30 a.m. for garbage pickup. All items must be bagged, bundled, or in a garbage toter. Items cannot exceed four feet by four feet. No furniture, tires, concrete, brick, or hazardous material. Appliances will be picked up by appointment only, and refrigerated appliances won't be picked up at all. Call 208-457-1820 to make your appointment for an appliance. E-recycling and drug takeback will be Saturday at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Drop off your old TVs, computers, cell phones, iPods, and electronic items to be recycled. We will be handing out free recycled grocery bags, garbage recycling calendars, energy-saving light bulbs, and toy mini toters. The PD's Drug Takeback Day is also at City Hall, and we'll also be accepting any old or unused prescription drugs for proper disposal at this time. They are available at any time at the PD, but it's also going to be at City Hall here on Saturday, too. For a list of accepted items and restrictions, visit the city's website at www/postfallsidaho.org. Also on Saturday, help us clean up our... help us clean your parks. We'll be picking up trash and pulling weeds from parks, greenways, and trails. The Parks Department will provide onsite direction and supplies from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Black Bay Park. Register by tomorrow, April 22nd, by calling the Park Operations Office at 773-8147. A day of event registration is from 8:00 to 8:30 a.m. at Black Bay Park, which is at 1220 East Third Avenue. General note about garbage and fees, please leave approximately four feet between the garbage and recycling bins while having the containers face outward. Your cooperation helps the garbage trucks pick up the bins more efficiently, and it helps you avoid additional fees. The Mayor's Youth Awards, nominations, applications for the 2015 Clay Larkin Mayor's Youth Awards are now being accepted. Forms must be received by Friday, May 8th, 2015, and can be picked up at City Hall or online at www-postfallsidaho.org. We also have a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting more than 3.2 million of our nation's children annually, and thousands of children locally, and whereas child abuse and neglect respect no racial, religious, class, or geographic boundaries, and whereas all of us want a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for all of the nation's and our community's children, and whereas Head Start, through its support of parenting classes, educational programs, and community service activities, is making significant progress in strengthening families and communities in order to prevent child abuse and neglect, and now, therefore, I, he, Ronald Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Post Falls, and urge citizens to use this time to better understand and recognize their role in supporting families and community prevention efforts, and how they can respond to this grievous problem. I would like to congratulate Head Start for their continued success in helping families break the silt of child abuse and neglect, dated this 21st of April, 2015.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Or declarations of conflict? Please, please.
I had a typo on the agenda.
Okay.
On the consent calendar, on item I, file number, I had A-14-16, it should be A-14-06.
It's my understanding Mr. Malloy caught that?
He did.
Very nice. There was also a word when we were talking about the LID and the consent calendar from the last meeting, in the meetings, I was quoted as saying, "If we are going to access instead of assess the fees," so just FYI, see, I read them, too. So, with that change, would you please present?
Item A is minutes from the April 7th, 2015 council meeting. Item B is payables, March 31st through April 13th, 2015. Item C is purchase of a four-wheel-drive, mid-sized crew cab pickup for the wastewater... I'm sorry, for the water reclamation division. Item D is state line tower site minor subdivision plot application. Item E is purchase of a four-wheel-drive, mid-sized crew cab pickup for the building department. Item F is wage compliance services agreement with Panhandle Area Council for the headworks equalization construction project. Item G is local limit study contract with the JUB engineers. Item H is beer and wine application for a premier auction located at 674 North Pleasant View. Item I is Jaclyn West Annexation Agreement, file number A-14-06. And item J is Hayden Beverage Minor Subdivision Plot Application.
Any questions?
Quick question. On the premier auction, is that for an event, or is that for long-term, for the beer and wine?
I would assume that's long-term, or if not, it would have received a...
I was going to say, yeah, it's just a long-term.
Be a special use permit. I've got it right here.
Thank you.
If not, entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item is public hearings, and we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Citizens issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to address council, please step forward and give your name. Chief?
I have to get up here every once in a while, because Skip always looks at me and does like this, you got something for us this week. But I appreciate just a chance to maybe speak with the council and the mayor about what's going on outside. If you spent any time outside this last weekend, you might have a head that looks like this. That also means that the grasses are drying out, and the forests are drying out, and we're not getting a lot of rainfall. So, I just want to encourage the citizens here in Post Falls to just be aware of that, be careful with your burning. We're coming right up on burn permit season, and they can get the permits online at no cost on the Idaho Department of Land. So, things are drying out very, very quickly. Even though we might get, you know, a bit of rain this week, those grasses dry out in really just an hour or two with any kind of a wind. So, it's time to be cautious, and I think we're in for a long, hot, dry summer with the way things are going.
Chief, there was quite a bit of smoke up north towards Rathram yesterday. Was that a slash burn?
That was a controlled burn on the backside of Rathram Mountain. But we have experienced, not in our area, but we have gone out to help our neighbors with some pretty substantial brush fires already this year. So, we just want to sort of keep putting the word out there for people to be extra careful, be mindful, especially of the wind when it pops up, and it pops up and nothing flat. And that's historically a problem on the prairie, so we're just urging a word of caution. I appreciate your time tonight, thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Seeing no one else, next item up is new business. First is fiscal year 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER. Jason. Jason said he had 65 slides, and I said he could show three of them.
I was just kidding, I wouldn't do that to you. I'm just glad to present the fiscal year 14 financial statements. Last year, I don't know if anybody remembers, but I was presenting to council in July, and here it is in April, so last year is my first year doing the financial statements by myself, and so I had a steep learning curve and had Shelley's assistance, and this year, last year they were done by end of May, and this year they were done on the... I didn't need an extension, so I was able to get them done by the end of March. So, I was pleased to do that. We had the financial statements compiled, they were audited, and everything, we had a clean audit from Magnuson and McHugh out of Coeur d'Alene, and the next step after that was to present them to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, for their accreditation. So, we will hear back from them, hopefully, in a few months. Okay. The financial statements are available on the city's website, but I just wanted to go through a couple of the highlights, instead of going through all of the numbers that are on there, whether it's the fixed assets, the balance sheet, entity-wide, but I thought I just wanted to touch on some of the goals and accomplishments that are listed in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I wanted to start with the Police Department. Some of the accomplishments and highlights that are listed are, the department added a new patrol lieutenant position. They implemented Office of Professional Standards. They started the Coffee of the Cop program, which was a big success. They are working with the Post Falls School District and implemented a teen court to... for juveniles, and one of their big accomplishments was also they have a 911 phone system upgrade that was completed last year. All right. Next is with Parks and Recreation. The Parks Department was reorganized, they have a Parks Manager position that was created, and they aligned the Urban Forestry Division, Maintenance and Construction Division to consolidate supervision. They obtained for 17th year a Tree City USA. Urban Forestry was able to distribute 3,000 trees on the... one of their annual giveaway program, and the value of the trees was estimated $300,000. And I don't know if anybody has been to Camillan Park and looked at the deck, but they constructed a 40-by-50 deck at the trailhead, and that was with the partnership of Badger Building. Looks very nice out there. Public Works and Community Development, they... Third Avenue Pump Station was upgraded for... to meet future demand. They designed, began of the water reclamation facility for... to meet future permitting regulations. Beck Road Interchange was completed, and also there was a signal traffic... a traffic signal installation at Spokane Street and Fourth. There we go. In Administration, the... tomorrow is probably good timing, tomorrow is the annual recycle... e-recycling event, oh, I'm sorry, this weekend, Saturday, sorry. This Saturday is the annual e-recycling event. Last year, they collected three and a half tons of electronics to be recycled, and they designed promotional items, and the advertising to go along with it. The department promoted city projects and Post Falls, along with the Post Falls Chamber for the Business Fair, and also a great accomplishment anywhere is the department created a balanced budget, maintaining the high level of service without increasing taxes. One thing you'll notice, and if you... hopefully, everybody takes time and looks at the website and looks through the CAFER, they'll notice that the city's population has increased to over 30,000 for fiscal year 14. At the back of the book, they have a... I've listed the Magnuson and McHugh, listed an unqualified opinion for the financial statements, and also when they're onsite, they also not only looked at the financial statements, but they also reviewed our policies and also examined our internal controls for cash, cash handling, our processes, segregation of duties, just little things like that, that they were here to examine. I submitted both the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the PAFER, which is the condensed version. It's called the Popular Annual Financial Report, that also GFOA gives, certifies that as well. I have both of those documents, they're both on the website, submitted both to... for accreditation, and last year, we received the award, which was the 16th year in a row. And then, is there any questions on the financial statements?
Make a comment, just for clarification. They issued an unqualified opinion, that doesn't mean they weren't qualified. That means, unqualified is what you want, means they found no errors.
That's what you want, yes.
But it says unqualified. They are qualified to issue the opinion.
They are qualified, yes.
Point that out.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jason?
No, that was my question, too.
I move to accept the Fiscal Year 2014 Financial Report as presented.
Second.
Motion second. We do it now, that wasn't in the... doesn't matter, we're going to do it now. Further discussion?
Okay.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, I didn't know if that was down below, but that's when we needed it, so thank you very much. Next item up, Timothy Track subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Manley, Associate Planner here with the City Post Falls, introducing the Timothy Track, actually presenting the Timothy Track subdivision, file number S-14-02. The applicant is CGMD LLC, and the requested action is to approve the proposed subdivision of approximately two acres of R1 single-family residential property of about eight lots, actually will be eight lots. The planning is on a commission, recommended approval last month at their March 10th meeting. The approximate location is here, where you see the asterisk, just north of Maplewood Avenue, west of Seeley Street, and east of Keon Court. Can be more accurately depicted right here, outlined in red, as Keon Court ends, the proposal is to extend Keon Court with four lots to the north and four lots to the south. The property size, as stated, is approximately two acres. The current land use is residential. Current zoning is R1, single-family residential. The surrounding land use is residential and industrial to the north, and the common plan designation is residential with the density at 4.1 lots an acre. The surrounding zoning is to the west, single-family residential, that'd be the properties within the City Post Falls already developed as residential. To the north is industrial and heavy industrial, that's separated by railroad right-of-way, it kind of serves as a buffer, and is no different, as stated, it has the development pattern to the west. South and east are properties that are residential in nature and are in the Cootney County. The water and sewer would be provided by the City Post Falls and access off Keon Court, from Keon Court off Maplewood Avenue. The Planning Division reviewed this, and that the lots meet or exceed the minimum lot dimension, 4 and R1, the proposed development is compatible with the nearby subdivisions in the area, and it's consistent with the comprehensive... The development is expected to be done in a single phase, and Keon Court would be extended to facilitate the subdivision. Engineering Division commented in regards to transportation, the proposed layout of Keon Court is acceptable and conforms with city standards. The east end of Keon Court would be configured to accommodate future expansions to the east, and that the fire code requirements are that there be a temporary turnaround done on the east side of that project. Also, the design of Maplewood Avenue conforms, or will conform, to the subdivisions that have developed to the west, and that drive ingress and egress for these residential properties would not be, or they would be prohibited onto Maplewood Avenue as part of the plot. For Maplewood Avenue, there'd be a homeowners association that'd be created to maintain all the irrigation and maintenance of that right-of-way. In regards to sanitary sewer, it would be extended for the wastewater master plan, and for domestic water, there'd be some reimbursement for oversizing of the water main in the Maplewood Avenue, and that would be negotiated as part of the construction improvement agreement. Cootney County Fire did comment, and they have no objections to the proposed subdivision, and I'd stand for any questions you have about the subdivision presented, or that was in the staff report.
Any questions, Mr. Manley? Thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Entertained a motion?
I'd move to approve Timothy Track subdivision, file number S-14-02, to include the recommended conditions by staff and planning and zoning.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, our ordinance is a resolution, the first is the resolution dealing with the investment policy.
Move to approve the resolution dealing with investment policy?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes. Next up is the ordinance on the franchise agreement with a Vista for Electric Service.
Move to place the ordinance on the franchise agreement with a Vista for electric service on its first and only title, reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the ordinance dealing with Jaclyn West Annexation.
Move to place... move to place the ordinance, Jaclyn West Annexation, file number A-14-06, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Henderson?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you.
Annexation and zone classification of property. Portions of Section 7 Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, and Section 12 Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, 14-acre parcel located on the south side of Gr...
purposes of the transmission, control, distribution, and sale of electricity, providing terms and conditions of the franchise and providing an effective date thereof.
Move to approve the ordinance franchise agreement with a Vista for electric services, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the ordinance dealing with Jaclyn West Annexation.
Move to place, move to place the ordinance Jaclyn West Annexation, file number A-14-06, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Annexation and Zone Classification of Property. Portions of Section 7, Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, and Section 12, Township 50 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, 14-acre parcel located on the south side of Grassland Avenue and west of Point Parkway.
Move to approve the ordinance Jaclyn West Annexation, file number A-14-06, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Administrative and staff reports?
I just wanted to mention the investment report was certified by the Association of Public Treasurers. It wasn't a topic that we discussed here, but Jason will be attending their annual conference this summer in Chicago, and when he attends the conference, they will supply him with a certification and a plaque, so we will get that back here and do a public information release on that and present it here at council meeting.
Thank you. Mayor comments. Chief, I watched the video of the robbery out of Pleasant View that your police department put on, that's great information, and as hopefully people know, I've frequently tried to compliment our PD, because I think we're second to none, I think you guys do great. But also I want to talk, you know, we had a great presentation from Mr. Beecham at a workshop today. When I, when I look at the staff and the reports we get and the information they provide us, it's truly a pleasure to work with you. Mr. Manley, you always do a fine job. Mr. Melvin, Mr. Paulus, when you guys present. Dave Fair, I told him and Justin, I told him to congratulate Justin for the tree fair, or the tree giveaway, it was a great event, well-run, you know, it's just tremendous, and the, the comments I hear from the service that our staff provide is wonderful, so I want to publicly thank you all. I think you guys just do a tremendous job, and you really do make our job easier up here, and we appreciate it. Counsel comments.
Well, I was wondering if Chief Hoag, I have a comment, but I was wondering if Chief Hoag wants to talk about Coffee with a Cop real quick, because that's this Sunday.
Yes, we're going to do Coffee with a Cop at the American Legion Post 143 from 9:00 to 10:30 this coming Sunday, so no agenda, come out, just visit with us. I think there's a breakfast going on at the same time at the Legion.
Yeah, but you can just come and visit with you all, too.
But you can just come and visit with us as well, so love to have people come out and connect with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I have one more thing, also at the American Legion, but it's next week, a week from Monday, so this coming Monday, nationally renowned artist Scott Lubato, and you can look him up online, selected Post Falls as the Idaho location on the 50 Flags Across America Tour, and so he will be painting in Post Falls next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and people are welcome to come out, so it will be a 40 by 8-foot, 40 wide by 8-foot flag mural, and he is spectacular. He, after 9/11, did a lot of firehouse doors across the country, and just extraordinary work, and we are really fortunate that Post Falls was selected as the one location in Idaho, and he's in Alaska right now, and he's on his way, so I would encourage you, just, people can watch for more information on that, but the public is welcome, bring the family, watch him paint, and.
Do you know where he's painting?
Oh, at the American Legion.
Thank you. Lynda, you have something, too?
I would just like to remind the community that we are having a fundraiser for Joanne Hildebrandt on Saturday at the Senior Center from 4:00 to 7:00. There'll be a spaghetti feed and some live and silent auction items. Joanne is battling lung cancer, and she and Alan have been lifelong residents of Post Falls, so if anybody would like to come down and show their support, we'd sure appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Just another word, another word of thanks, I was at the Post Falls Little League opening day on Saturday, and the amount of support from the community was impressive, including the Fire Department, the Police Department, had equipment there for the kids to enjoy, and it was, it was an excellent event, and the, the effort that the Fire Department, Police Department, and others go to, to support these community activities and really develop relationships just continues to impress and positively baffle me, and I really appreciate everything you guys do, so I wanted to say thank you.
Who threw out the first pitch?
There were five people that threw out the first pitch.
Well, Scott's was memorable.
Scott, Scott was one. What did they have that clocked at, 102, I think, was, was the official rating?
It wasn't working properly. He said 23, but I think it was around 70.
Yeah, it fritzed out there at the last minute.
So it works opposite of the police radar guns, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Well, you were under the speed limit, so that's.
Any other comments? With that, we do not need an executive session, so the next motion is?
To adjourn.
And that would be a second?
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.